Yes, yes. I have this book that has been patented by Mr. Vencer. It says to restart. I believe Mr. Fought has the first edition of that book, don't you? That authored by Jody Vencer about... Oh, come on. You slow.
Oh, we're loud.
Yes, he went ahead and started.
Okay, I'm just making sure you know.
Yeah. Good morning. There we go. Good morning. Apologize for the delay. Some technical difficulties. As always, before we get started this morning, I'd like to have Brother Brent Williams, if you would, please come forward and lead us in the invocation, and Commissioner McCam, the pledges.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you that without you, we can do nothing. It says that in John 15, but with you, you have said that we are your workmanship, we are your masterpieces created in Christ Jesus for good works. That's what's happening here today, that you've prepared in advance for us to do. And if we can just trust you with all our heart and not lean on our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge you, that you'll make the path straight here today. And we thank you for that, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas law. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Brother Williams, thanks, sir. All right. Well, the time is 9:10. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners Court to order. We have individuals that have registered in Citizens Comments. And I believe this wants to speak at which the item is proposed. This is item number A... Excuse me. I do apologize. Be under item number four. Is there any other public comments?
No, sir.
None? Okay. Then we will call this individual when the item four is up. All right. Then moving on to item one, which is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting, Commissioners Court on August the 2nd, 2022. Those are available in our backup. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing now judged, I move we approve the minutes for the Commissioners Court regular session on August the 2nd, 2022, as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the minutes of August the 2nd, 2022, as presented. Does any further comment? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on certain property tax collection agreements between Henderson County and the following taxing authorities. And please bear with me, this is quite extensive. We have the City of Athens, City of Brownsboro, City of Caney... Caney City, City of Chandler, City of Enchanted Oaks, the City of Eustis, City of Frankston, City of Gun Barrel, City of Log Cabin, City of Malikoff, City of Paint Springs, City of Star Harbor, City of Tool, City of Trinidad, Athens ISD, Brownsboro ISD, Crossroads ISD, Eustis ISD, Frankston ISD, La Pointe ISD, Malikoff ISD, Merkson ISD, Trinidad ISD, Trinity Valley Community College, Emergency Service District Number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, and 11, Lakeview Management and Development District, and the Athens Municipal Water Authority. No wonder everybody thinks we raise their taxes. We collect the taxes for everyone. Good morning.
Good morning.
Before us today are these collection contracts?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any questions? I don't know what you want me to say.
I did. There was three on there that weren't signed.
By the entity?
Mm-hmm. Frankston, ESD 1, and Lakeview Management.
That's because I just received those two. I'm still waiting on Lakeview. They haven't had a quorum, so they assured me they'll get it to me this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, Court, these are agreements that many of you will remember times when all of these entities had their own tax collecting departments. Well, over the years, the law has changed, making that responsibility the counties as an option for these entities to be able to save money instead of duplication of processes. It is something that I have not appreciated, that I believe is unfair to the county in the fact that when you receive a tax statement with all of these entities on it, the name across top is Henderson County. But given the situation, there's nothing we can do about it.
That's correct.
This is standard. This has been done for a number of years now. I get to get on my soapbox every year about it. Any other comments?
The City of Paint Springs?
Yes, sir.
They don't have a...
No, sir. We do their delinquent collections, but it's my understanding that they tried to get current collections, but they didn't make it this year, so they're trying for next year.
So what is... What would be their delinquent...
When they used to collect taxes, or we collect them, it was long before I came. We only do their delinquents. So if there's any delinquent taxes out there with the City of Paint Springs, we collect it, sort of like Gun Barrel. They don't have a city tax now, but they do have delinquent, so...
What would be delinquent if you don't have a city tax?
There are always properties that are assessed somewhere in time, of which during that time, the property tax was not paid. And Paint Springs did have and have the lawroom tax for a very short period of time, one to two years, roughly 18 years ago, something like that. And because of that, the need for a contract for collection is still there. Gun Barrel had one...
That's a long time ago.
Long time.
My understanding, they're trying to get it back up.
And same situation. Now, there is a fee charged?
Yes, sir. I believe it's 90 cents a parcel for each entity other than the ESDs.
Yes. And that is to cover the cost of materials and such. I believe it's like 95 cents a parcel, something like that. The county has not authorized to make a profit by providing this service. It is only to cover the expense. Not counting labor. Any further comments or discussion? Entertaining motion with judge's authorization to sign?
I like the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Spidey to approve the property tax collection agreements between Henderson County and the previously stated entities with county judge's authorization to sign. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Well, the time is 9:17, so we'll be moving to item three, which is a public hearing, which was scheduled to be held at 9:15. May we get a motion to move into public hearing?
I'll make a motion moving to public hearing at 9:17.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Tully to move into public hearing at 9:17. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. We're now entering into item seven... Excuse me, item three, which is the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak concerning the creation of Emergency Service District 13 located in Precinct 1? You will be given three minutes to speak. You need to state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this time? Please come forward, ma'am.
Well, it's the most time you know in this room.
If you would, please state your name and your address.
That's what I was about...
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. You keep me straight. My name is Ann Sherrill. I live at 112 Shoreline Circle, which is in the Clearwater Bay area. It's right off of 198. And I am in the proposed district, so I speak as a residence for that. I've had multiple conversations... Somebody's got to put a time clock on me, okay? I've had multiple conversations, Judge, in court with people from all over and all walks the life. And the one thing that we all agreed when we were talking was that in no way do we not appreciate our volunteers. In no way do we not appreciate their dedication. But what we're questioning here, rather than the people, the individuals, is that we're questioning the guidelines by which they go by. There's guidelines that are out there, and they aren't really standardized. If you look across the state, everybody's doing their own thing. And that's from the governor's office all the way down to the local level. Everybody knows there's an issue. Everybody understands there is no standardization out there. But quite frankly, they're covered over with other things, and they can't do anything about it. And I am hoping that we can change that here. Problem we have here is once a district is established, you, as you've already pointed out, you have to have five commissioners. Right now, with nine ESDs, you've got 45 commissioners. Something goes wrong with the commissioners, you have the option of replacing them and starting all over again. That's where it is. They go, and they go on. One thing you'll find out is once the ESDs are formed, they never die. They just keep on and on and on. All of this is run by Health and Safety Code 775. I want to point out to you that it was written in 1998... in 1989, excuse me. And except for minor clarifications in '05 and '17, it hasn't changed since then. Property taxes have gone up. You've already seen, I went through that list, and I'm going, my goodness. And you've already pointed out, guess who gets blamed? Property taxes go up, it's you. Support the rapidly spreading opinion that our property taxes need to stop. House District 10, Brian Harrison just recently issued a resolution asking for all taxes to stay flat. Right before court, I presented each one of the commissioners with a resolution that the Republican Cub of Party of Henderson County voted on the 1st of August that we do not want, that represents all 30 precincts in Henderson County. And by and large, we do not want additional taxes. What happens if this proposal dies? Because that's really the question. Nothing. We're still going to get fire service like we've been getting it. So I'm asking you this morning that rather than add to the problem by adding another entity to the already overloaded system, I'm asking you to go in, deny this at this time, and let's fix the problem. The solution can start with you, and that's what I'm hoping that'll do.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sherrill. Is there anyone further wishing to make comment? Make one last call for anyone wishing to speak on this matter. Seeing that no one wishes to speak, may we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion to close at 9:23.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spidey, second by Commissioner McCam, to close public hearing at 9:23. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item four is consider and take action on order of election for the creation of Henderson County Emergency Service District 13 to be held on November the 8th, 2022. And we have Ms. Lucky with us here today, our Elections Administrator.
Good morning, Court. So the county's... The petition's been filed. We had the public hearings, and the next step would be to order the election, so that would... My office would handle that. So I'm just bringing the order if you decide to order the election. So the early voting times are noted on here. They're the same as the other one that we did, so no changes.
Questions, Court?
My understanding, Judge, is that they've gone through a procedure of a petition, and once they've done that petition, and we've gone over it and checked all the signatures and stuff to make sure they were all legit, that we really don't have a right to remove it from the agenda. We just have to approve it. But there's been petition process done, so...
Am I correct? Mr. County Attorney?
You're correct with one small caveat. And that is, the statute does say that the court has to find that this would promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the public. And then, you're correct in that it says that the court shall order the election. The reason I say that's a small caveat, I believe, is to improve our level of these throughout the year, had a conversation about this. Volunteerism is down. Money's high. Fire equipment's going through the roof. It's economical, some of the prices you pay for new fire equipment. And so, I think we always traditionally found that you do, in fact, ESD do promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the people of the districts. I don't think that's a statement in any way that we're forming more taxes or we want to create these for more taxes. I just think that's what they do. That's the whole design of the ESDs. But, you know, once that, if you believe this would promote the public health and safety and welfare of that district, then it becomes mandatory to court, set it for election. And that was the design of the process. The statute uses shall throughout, which we all know shall is not the language that the court should deviate from. It's mandatory language. It says that the county judge shall accept that petition. He doesn't even have the right to say, no, we're not going to take that. And then it says the county judge shall follow that with the county clerk's office. And then we shall set a Commissioners Court hearing, and we shall have a public hearing. And then the court, as long as it finds that it promotes the public health, safety, and welfare, shall set it for election. And so the design is all to take it out of the Commissioners Court's hands and to give it back to the people to vote. You aren't creating the district today. All you're doing is allowing the people that live in the district to turn out and vote. And if they don't want to be taxed for it, then they're welcome to show up and vote against it. The power and the authority is in the voter's hands here with the creation of these. Sorry, I got a long winded on your end.
That's good. Good information.
So the only thing we have to decide is if we think it promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, then we shall.
Yes, set the election, yeah.
Commissioner?
Only question I have, and I don't know if it's relevant to it, but how is the fire marshal may speak to this or something? How are they funded now?
So that area right now is funded basically by donations from the county. I mean, they have county contract that would be Log Cabin Fire Department in that area. A little bit of that coverage is Caney City's current coverage area too, so that's how we fund it and we're sponsored right now.
Rural... With rural fire protection, correct?
Yeah, it's not currently part of the ESD. It's a little gap in between two ESDs, basically, or three.
And would any other... Would Log Cabin... City of Log Cabin cover any of the... Do they...
I don't know. The ESD board is the one who decides who they contract with, fire department wise. So I know the City of Log Cabin has decided to be inside of the ESD. I think they voted on that as part of the petition. Caney City chose to stay out of it. But the ESD board would decide who they use to contract with, fire department.
Did the Log Cabin Fire Department have to get approved through the city before this came out? I just...
Yeah, the city did have to...
Approve it in their city council meeting?
Approve it at the city council meeting to be inside of the potential ESD.
Okay. I was just making sure that got done.
That was a part of the initial items, was the resolution of the City of Log Cabin was included where they wanted to be designated within or agreed to be designated within.
Okay.
Inside the municipalities, fire service is a responsibility of that municipality. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
In the unincorporated areas, what we refer to as rural fire protection, currently those areas not within a city and not within an ESD are the responsibility of the county.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And currently, in those areas, we contract for that service with the fire departments of that geographical location to provide rural fire protection in the unincorporated areas.
Yes, sir.
And we are funding a little over $10,000, I believe, annually?
A little over $11,000.
Little over $11,000.
I wish this would have been a problem that would have been fixed years ago.
Oh...
Because we got nine now. We got this one. We got the Chandler one, that's 11. We got two more possible later on. Could be 13, so, I mean, you're looking at 75 commissioners. We know all of them don't have the same views, and just like was stated earlier, you know, each one of them is going to be run differently. And there's no set commonality about most of them, even though all of them will be inside Henderson County. There'd be 13 different organizations. But I don't know how we can say that it still don't promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
I wish we could have turned back time. And being a member of the court at that time, I wish we would have taken a different route than we have. I wish we would have taken it upon ourselves to institute the fire district, which the court could have way back there. It would have made the process more cohesive, but given our belief in conservative nature of taxation, we wanted to... We didn't want to impose that for fire protection. So we left it into this situation where we have multiple fire districts. And we are in the very, very minority of counties that have this many fire districts. Our neighbor to the east, Smith County... Our neighbor to the east, Smith County, has two, and the entire county is covered.
So today, all we're doing if it passes is putting it on the ballot for the voters in the area to decide if they need one or not for the taxes.
There is, there is an organization called Safety that is a overlooker, gives the guidelines on how to run these ESDs. So it's not just do what you want by the commissioners. There is some guidelines that they have to go, and work out the oversight, that they go over these, by these rules.
I had heard that Gary Dennis was going to be taking the leadership role.
Yes, he's, uh, ESD 11, and he's on the Safety Board.
He is on the Safety Board, and he is...
That's ESD 6. If you do have any questions about ESDs, Gary Dennis is, is the go-to man that can give you a lot of information on it. If you need to talk to Gary Dennis over at ESD 6, he is on the Safety Board.
Senator, would you say that the, across the county, what parcels of land or, you know, geographical parcels are not covered by an ESD? Is this the next?
I mean, if, if this one passes, then you're looking at probably less than 15% of the county that will be covered by an ESD.
And is that because they're within the city?
Some of them are because they're within the city, and some of them are just in rural areas that it hasn't passed. For, you know, previous. But we're almost, we're almost included now.
So if a per, if a person lived in one of those unincorporated areas of an ESD, and they got a response, then they would really, would you say that they would be getting fire service for free?
I'm trying to understand your question. You're asking if somebody is inside of an ESD?
No. Is outside of an ESD. They're still paying county taxes.
Correct.
I'm paying an ESD tax, but yet would, their tax money would be paying a portion of the $12,000 or $11,800?
As soon as you get, yes, sir, so if they pay county taxes, not ESD, and we are contracted with fire departments to cover that area, it gets, gets...
Yeah. So that's how they would be kind of paying for their fire service?
Yes, sir.
And they, they are all contracted together, logged up for mutual aid. So a lot of times, you'll have a fire department that's in an ESD when there is a, a fire or something. Majority of them, they're going with mutual aid, taking their trucks out of their ESD into the rural area or another ESD, and that's good fire protection also.
Well, it's one of those issues that the court has wrestled with for a number of years, as we stated earlier. As you can see, we wrestle again today. When you were speaking of areas uncovered by ESDs, and don't hold me to this, but we have a section up in the northwest corner that is the Seven Points and Municipal Gun Barrel area. Then you have an area just east of Gun Barrel and Maybank that is still open and not within an ESD. You have a section of ground between Malakoff and Trinidad that is still uncovered, that is extremely rural and that's a creek bottom through there. And then as you move to the east, you have Merkson Baxter Slot that is currently not under. And then the Chandler area, which is currently up for an election this coming cycle. But those are the areas, from memory, that are not currently covered. I know there has been effort by Baxter, Merkson, discussions about creating one.
Like Berryville?
Oh, I forgot, yeah. Berryville, Mochester, Coffee City.
That's not having ESDs. You know, my thoughts too is, you know, is on the ESD, and I've asked ESD 6 if they would consider, if those three wanted to create ESDs, if they could go up for election to join ESD 6 instead of creating three different ESDs, join ESD 6, and all that area would be under one ESD.
And the authority that the ESD has is through that contract. As you know, we've had some ESDs that have had two contracts because there were two fire services within that area. There's nothing that restricts an ESD from contracting with a fire department that is outside of the ESD area. It is a, once created, it is a subdivision of the state of Texas with full rights and authorities that are guided by the United Statutes. So we bid at it from every direction. Is there an action that wishes to be taken at this time?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, of the creation of Henderson County Emergency Service District Number 13 to be held on November the 8th, 2022.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Item fails for lack of a second. Thank you very much. Item five is consider and take action on order of election for county and precinct offices to be held on November the 8th, 2022. Ms. Lucky?
Yes. I'm bringing to you today the order for election for our county precinct offices and county offices for November 8th. We will have several on the ballot. There's only one that is going to be opposed, Precinct 4 JP is the only one that has opposed. Everybody will be on the ballot, but it'll, but we just have to order the election for November 8th, and then this will be with the governor's race and everything else that the governor will order.
Okay. Question for Ms. Lucky? If not, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the order of election for county and precinct offices to be held on November the 8th, 2022. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number six is consider and take action on request to purchase replacement battery and two cartridges for the Constable III Taser. Ms. Lee, there's been some discussion, and I think Ms. Goggins has had discussion as well with the office.
And I would think if it's all done, if we're taking it from security, then that's such as a commission, we'll take it from that time.
Yeah, Ms. Goggins.
It seems like a reasonable request.
If I remember right, we actually purchased that in the same fashion a number of years ago, so...
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner McCam, and second by Commissioner Richardson, to approve the purchase of replacement battery and two cartridges for Constable III Taser from, is it Courthouse and Security?
It's JP Courthouse and Security.
JP Courthouse and Security, is that bound with the motion, gentlemen?
Yeah, JP's Courthouse and Security.
All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item number seven is consider and take action on renewal of the 2022-2023 Employee Health Insurance Benefits Program.
Good morning, Court. It is of the recommendation of the insurance committee to bring forward today to remain with our current HSA plan with no changes. And then there is a recommendation to change our current HMO plan to option two in your backup. It's going to change the copayments from $30 down to $10, raise the ER copayment from 400 to 600, and remove the prescription drug deductible and the specialty drug deductible as well.
This is a, um, one of the things we're currently struggling, struggling with in budget. The actual percentage increase on health insurance this year was, what, 7 what?
So 7.2 for the HSA and 7.6 for the HMO.
Okay. I believe the, um, the cost that we were looking at is in excess of $320,000?
Yes, sir.
And depending on the route of which we take, it could go higher than that.
That is correct.
Okay. This is the wonders of doing business.
The change in option two was that we went from a $30...
Deductible, sorry, $30 copayment.
To a $10 copay.
To a $10 copayment, yes, sir. And that's for a primary care physician visit. Your specialty doctors, your oncologists, your dermatologists will remain at a $40 copayment, as well as urgent care at 60. But you will see that rise in the ER copayment, and that's just used as a deterrent from the employees going to the ER when it's not a true medical emergency.
Which that's going to help our employees, especially if they have some dependents, because they were paid, if they had two dependents, it'd have been a...
$60.
$60 copay, and that'd be 20.
Yes, sir.
But we did increase the emergency room copay.
Yes, sir, we did.
$100 deductible on prescription drugs.
We removed that as well. And we removed the specialty drug copayment of $250 every single time they were to pick up that specialty drug. And then I wanted to note that the dental and the vision renewals remain the same.
In a sense, it goes to $10 a month, but the first time they go to the doctor and the first time they go to the prescription in November, they'll save all that money that they're going to pay out throughout the year.
That is correct.
Now, what we have before us is just the tax sponsor. This is Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yes, sir.
This does not involve...
The MetLife Vision or the MetLife County Paid Accidental Death and Dismemberment Policy. Those were also no renewals, and there was no, at a no renewal rates that remained the same, so there was no action that needs to be taken on those.
Any other questions or comments?
I move to, to approve the change in the medical...
Judge's authorization.
Judge's authorization to sign.
I remember.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, and second by Commissioner Thule, to approve the renewal of the 2022-2023 Employee Health Insurance Benefits provided through TAC with the county judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Second item is number eight, is consider and take action on the 2022-2023 Proposed Employee Wellness Incentive Plan.
Yes, Court. So currently, I believe we're in our second year of our annual wellness incentive plan. This requires employees to get an annual physical and take a tobacco certification course. So it's either a tobacco cessation course, or you certify as a non-tobacco user in order to avoid a $25 monthly premium differential per item that we enrolled, that we're enrolled in, so the annual physical and the tobacco. It is my recommendation that we continue with the wellness incentive. We have seen quite a few employees quit tobacco. I've seen, I would say 10 to 15 employees who have chosen to quit tobacco after taking the cessation course. I believe it is a step in the right direction in order to hopefully renew, reduce our renewal rates in the future with getting the annual physical and allowing our employees to catch illnesses before they become a catastrophic event.
Questions or comments, Court?
I think the wellness benefits are helping a lot. It's like some of my employees, they just don't go to the doctor. Since we've had them get these physicals and stuff, I've had one of them told that, hey, you take too much ibuprofen, you know? One of your cholesterol's high, they didn't know it. So, high blood pressure, they just didn't ever go to the doctor. So it's, it's opened their eyes and made them, made them start looking into their health a little better.
And I do want to note that the court does have the option to remain the same with the initiative, the wellness incentive program, whether it be we remain with the 25, or we up the, the ante, I guess, with per price, if that is what the court wanted to do. You can up it to whatever you guys wanted to do. But it's my recommendation that we stay with the 25.
Do you know, I'm saying, how many people are, have to pay?
Yes, so last year, we had 88 employees that had to pay for both items, they didn't complete both. And I want to say it was 26 that didn't complete the annual physical. So of combined, the 88, 26 of them, only did not, did not complete the physical.
And where does that, that money go to?
So that currently stays in account here with the county. Nikki, if you'll help me here and make sure I'm saying this right, but it currently stays with an account in, in the county. We bank that money, and then it can be used in the future to lower our renewal rates is the idea of that differential. But currently is here with the county.
And this physical is free?
And the annual physical is free, yes, sir. We also bring in catapults every year, and that suffices the requirement for the annual physical. So employees, if they are able to schedule catapult, they do not have to take time off work to go to their actual PCP, their primary care doctor, to get their annual physical
Any other questions or comments? And what the proposal is, is continue with the $25 penalty for those that are tobacco users that do not participate in the cessation program, and for $25 for those that do not have the annual physical.
I also want to note that it is for non-tobacco users as well. If they do not certify as a non-tobacco user on the Sonic Boom website, they will be charged $25. Only if their department head comes to court and allows and signs an affidavit saying they're a non-smoker, would we waive that if an employee did not complete the requirement online by the due date of August 31st.
Hang on just a second.
Yes, sir.
We don't need to, I don't think we need to get back in that. We let that slide the first year, and it's a cutoff. They go now, and I think that was a one-time deal.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, if we're going to put that in, in the deal, then I'm out.
Okay.
I think it was a one-time deal that when we installed this, and that deal is over with, and it's better dropped, so...
Did we make any adjustments in any written policy?
Yes, sir.
Or we did not?
Yes, sir.
And that was the workaround, giving it being the first?
The first year. And I believe with those employees that got it waived, there was glitches in the system that they all stated that they completed it. However, they were not complete on my report, sent from the Sonic Boom provider.
So procrastination can cost you $25 a month.
Yes, sir. Especially if you're a tobacco user, because that tobacco course is six weeks long. So if you don't start it six weeks before August 31st, which we give you ample amount of time, we start November 1st of the previous year. So for instance, November 1st of '21 to August 31st of '22 is the timeframe that you have to complete those incentives.
And there has been notification... And there has been notification?
I usually send out a notification at least once a quarter, or twice a month, is usually what I try to do. I even send out individual, to individual department heads of who hasn't completed it in their departments.
From TAC, is this a, a kind of a standard deal that a lot of counties are doing?
Yes, sir, so several counties do it. There are some counties that charge $175 per item that not, that's not completed. So 25 is on the low range, and it ranges to however much you guys want to put it up. The 175 is the highest I've seen.
175?
Per item.
Per?
Item per month.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, Court, how do we wish to proceed? Do we wish to continue our current process with the employee wellness incentive? Or do we wish to change it at this time?
I'll move, we, we stay with our same deal, $25 for annual physical, $25 for non-tobacco user for 2022, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, and second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the 2022-2023 Proposed Wellness Incentive Plan and making no changes. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Did you vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, item nine, received financial reports, of which we do have the complete financial reports of the, from the court system. These are available for review after court, if anyone wishes to. Item 10 is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Ms. Harris, we've got a couple of these today.
Yes, sir, have biweekly 15 and biweekly 16.
Okay. Court, questions on the payroll distributions for 15, for payroll period 15 and 16? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, and second by Commissioner Richardson.